Good evening and welcome to the September 5th, 2024, meeting of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven members. We have four commission members here in the chambers and one commissioner who is online remotely in St. Louis. Each member volunteers their time and is a Bloomington resident. Members are appointed by the city council. The Planning Commission is advisory to the city council. For most items, the commission makes recommendations, and the city council has the final decision-making authority. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission can approve or deny on its own, subject to appeal to the city council. For each item, there will be a staff report, then a chance for the applicant to present, then a chance for any member of the public to provide testimony. Then the commission will close the public hearing and discuss the item before action is taken. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item one on tonight's agenda is a major revision to preliminary and final development plans for a partial redevelopment of the South Town Shopping Center. And we are looking for the staff report, Mr. Centenario.
Chair Albert.
Yes.
I will be abstaining from participation in this item due to a conflict of interest.
Excellent. Thank you. We will wait Commissioner Cunningham to go to the back. Mr. Centenario.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this was a continuance. We had a quorum issue at the last meeting. But we're here to discuss a number of entitlements for South Town Shopping Center, preliminary development plan, preliminary and final development plans, preliminary plat, and then a plating variance, which I'll detail. And it doesn't want to go. What's that? Yeah, this thing. All right. Well, thank you. I think we're all familiar with South Town Shopping Center. The, obviously, it's a very prominent, large site within the city of Bloomington, the Penn American District. Interstate 494 to the north, American Boulevard to the south, and then the west and east bounds are Penn Avenue and then Knox Avenue. Knox Avenue, the public right-of-way ends at American, but there's still a private street that goes north of American Boulevard West. So when we have multi-phase plan developments, we have essentially two documents, if you will, or sets of documents, and one is a preliminary development plan, or PDP. That includes what the applicant is proposing to construct in the near future, and then there are future phases that are identified, too. So that makes up a preliminary development plan or master plan. And so the preliminary development plan includes the proposed phase, which is a 120,000-square-foot retailer, two levels, and an outdoor athletic field, including what's outlined in the red dashed area. That's all the physical changes geographically. And then there is a future phase that's identified as a four-level medical office building, about 104,000 square feet. There are some unique features of South Town and future phases that are not identified on this in the documents, which I'll explain. And, you know, one thing I just wanted to note quickly about the PDP is we had past iterations that essentially included land that was east of Knox extended. That's not what the applicant is proposing. Essentially, the South Town Shopping Center would, the planned development would end at Knox, but then we still have some pedestrian improvements between Knox and the Orange Line Underpass. So this is a massing model that the applicant put together, and, you know, just to be clear, this is not part of the proposed development application. But we asked the applicant to put this together to kind of get an idea of what future phases could hypothetically look like. And so for reference, the medical office building phase is in this geographical location, but then these other phases are purely conceptual. This phase here, and this is, you're looking south, so this is the northwest corner of Knox and American. That's an important piece of land, because that's actually under a separate zoning district, and there are some agreements between the city and the applicant on future development of that property. But these buildings that are east of Knox are purely conceptual. This is just a view of what Knox could look like with several levels of development from the street level. Just gives you a flavor of an urban character that could be developed in the future. So going into that corner, the northwest corner of Knox and American, I have the zoning on the screen, and the vast majority of the site is C3. This northwest corner is C5, and so the C5 district is one of our mixed-use districts. It has a higher FAR requirement, and it also has a lot of design standards that apply that don't apply in other districts. And so it's unique that we have a split zoning like this, but that was, frankly, a negotiated settlement or agreement between the applicant and the city when these areas were rezoned as part of the Penn American District Plan. Here's just another way of looking at it, but it includes the FAR, the floor area ratios that were agreed to. South Town Shopping Center was 0.4. The northwest corner of Knox and American, minimum FAR is 1.0, and then outside of this planned development, but the east of Knox, there's also a minimum FAR of 1.0. And so while the applicant did not depict a phase within this northwest corner, we have included a condition essentially retaining that as part of what's already been agreed to, although it's not, a future phase is not depicted on the plans. Now, shifting gears to the final development plan, so this is the plan, the Dick's House of Sport, the 120,000-square-foot retailer. You could see that most of the physical changes would be to roughly the east half of the planned development. And so you see the proposed building, it says under Lot 2 or within Lot 2. Lot 3 would be vacant and stabilized for that future medical office building. And then the parking field in between the north and the south ends of the shopping center would be reconstructed. And so you see a pretty significant change from what's there today. We have parking islands that, for the most part, meet the minimum width with landscaping, whereas today, there really isn't much out there, as well as a lot of pedestrian enhancements with sidewalks, both in front of the buildings and then between the north and south ends of the site. It's a pretty significant change from what would exist today. Again, this is that pedestrian enhancement that I mentioned earlier. So the building is the Lucky Thirteens, so this is just east of Knox, and then the Orange Line is the Orange Dash Line, BRT. And so today, if you look at the picture to the right, you have the trail, or the concrete trail that runs under 494. There's a crosswalk, and then that crosswalk ramp just leads you into the Lucky Thirteens parking lot. Certainly not a very comfortable pedestrian environment. So one of the improvements that the applicant is, would build, is a sidewalk that connects the Orange Line BRT trail to the rest of the South Town Shopping Center. And I just tried to overlay the plan to give you an idea of what's being proposed there. So this is the landscaping plan. I outlined the future phase, the Lot 3, that would be the medical office building. So what we are proposing, or for the commission to consider, is they aren't showing a 100% co-complying amount of landscaping because it includes the entirety of this Lot 3 area. What we thought was a reasonable approach is essentially to deduct that space from the total developable area. That's how we derive the requirement. Just understanding that if a bunch of trees are planted, the hope would be that this lot develops in the near future, and then those would have to be removed and replaced. So we came up with what we thought was a reasonable number for this initial phase for the commission's consideration. It is important to note that if and when future development occurs, each one of those final development plans does have to have its own landscaping plan, and we would review the landscaping when we're reviewing the final development plan. So that certainly, we're not proposing any permanent elimination or reduction of landscaping within the shopping center. So we're familiar that the user is Dick's House of Sport, and so similar theme of architecture and materials. There would be a fair amount of glass and brick. The green is metal panels. One modification that would be needed is the amount of EPIS that was proposed. EPIS in the city is a secondary material. That's limited to 15% of each elevation. They had elevations that exceeded that amount, and so we're not supportive of any flexibility to reduce the amount of, or I'm sorry, increase the amount of EPIS on the building. The main, the easiest thing to do would be to convert that to a traditional STUCO system, and then it would be completely co-complying. And here's a two-dimensional, this is a drawing of the building elevation. So this was a prototype drawing. It wasn't specifically designed for the site, but you get an idea of what the architecture is, the materials, and essentially what the storefront would be. And one unique characteristic is this 18,000-square-foot outdoor athletic field, and the intent, as I understand, would be to have it available for a variety of uses. You know, winter, winter sports, a variety of, like, testing, or folks can try out what they potentially could buy, as well as just having events. And that would be illuminated, so there would be some nighttime activity, too. We always look at parking, and so we had to calculate what the parking requirement is based on the number of, the amount of retail and the amount of restaurant seats. And so what we came up with was a parking requirement of about 1,800 stalls. The applicant's proposing a little over 1,600, and so there's about a little over 9% deviation from city code. Might seem like a lot, but this number doesn't take into any account any, like, shared characteristics, internal capture. And, you know, we're all familiar with South Town, and we generally recognize that there is more than adequate parking on-site. So we feel the proposed parking quantity is more than enough, and actually, we're recommending a little bit of wiggle room where, if the plan continues to evolve and modify, that if a few more parking stalls are lost, that's still an acceptable quantity. So we had a, we thought up to an 11% reduction would be appropriate for staff to kind of work through plan modifications. The last element relates to the preliminary plat in the plating variance. And so here is the preliminary plat. They did not submit a final plat, so that would have to be forthcoming. But the preliminary plat essentially sets the stage for future land subdivisions. And what they're proposing is to subdivide South Town Shopping Center into four lots. It's pretty remarkable that it's all within one parcel today. But as future phases develop, the applicant wants to subdivide based on each of those phases. So Lot 1 would be the majority of the existing retail. Lot 2, the current phase, the House of Sport. Lot 3 would be the medical office building, and Lot 4 is that future corner, northwest Knox and American corner. Here's just another image of the existing conditions and the plat itself, the preliminary plat. And so what our code requires is that if you have a preliminary plat, your park dedication is based on the land uses that you're proposing for the entire preliminary development plan. And we support a plating variance to defer park dedication for future phases, not for House of Sport, but for the future phases. Not a elimination of park dedication, but a deferral. So if the medical office building or that corner, Knox and American, develops at the time of building permit, the park dedication fees would be due at that time. And so we are recommending approval. I do have the motions before you. First, for the preliminary file development plans, then the preliminary plat, and then the plating variance. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Centenario, in the staff report, it was noted there's an agreement between the developer and the city about floor area ratio at 0.4, and I believe the report noted that they would be short of the floor area ratio. Could you discuss that further?
Sure, Commissioner. So the minimum that was agreed to, negotiated, was 0.4. What the applicant is proposing is just a little bit below that, at 0.37. So it is a higher FAR than what's on-site today, but it doesn't quite get to that 0.4 level.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Mr. Centenario, how do I know if Commissioner Curry has a question?
That is a great question.
I have a question.
You do. Okay. Commissioner Curry, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I believe the buildings, I think these buildings were condemned by the city. I might be wrong on that, but is there any TIF money or anything, any sort of support that the city is providing to the applicant for this development at all?
Chair Albert, Commissioners, I believe the applicant is seeking tax agreement financing, although unfortunately, it's not something that we review or make recommendations on. So I don't know the details on what that ask is. The applicant is here today, and I suspect they could provide some more detail.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. Mr. Centenario, you noted that the zoning C5 for that northwest corner, is that similar to the zoning that is existing across the street at the more built-out, more dense Penn American District?
Commissioner, it is. So the, the Penn American District Plan, there's a variety of parcels that are zoned for C5, and the whole idea of C5 zoning is to have it much more urban in character. And so we have a higher floor area ratio minimum, and there's a variety of additional design standards that deal with transparency, minimum transparency along streets, building enclosure, trying to frame streets more so than like a suburban-style development, as well as ensuring that buildings are located closer to the streets, so you have a much more urban character.
Great. Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Would the applicant like to add comments? Welcome.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, my name's Bob Cunningham, and I'm the reason that Commissioner Cunningham had to refuse himself. I'd like to just answer a couple of the questions that were posed by the Commissioners before I get into my own prepared remarks. I'd like to just point out that no part of South Town has been condemned. We did undertake the demolition ourselves. If you recall, last October, we came into both the Port Authority and the city council to get a preliminary development agreement recognizing that the cost of the demolition may be included in a future TIF district. So we will be seeking some level of TIF support. We're working with the port on that right now. We have not yet made official application for any TIF support, but we do plan to seek it. The other thing that I'd just like to point out is that the Dick's House of Sports Plan shows that it's a two-story building. Some of the images that you saw tonight indicated a one-level building, and I just want to make sure we're clear that that is a 60,000-square-foot footprint, 120,000-square-foot total building, and the FAR of that Lot 2 would be in excess of 0.5 FAR. Lastly, another comment that was made was about the overall FAR that's being achieved on the entirety of South Town, doesn't meet the 0.4 FAR. We didn't intend, I don't think, I wasn't around 10 years ago when the whole FAR discussion was made, but it wasn't intended, we did not think, to be met, to have a 0.4 FAR met with the construction of just one additional building. So we plan to meet the 0.4 FAR over time as projects get redeveloped, and when that medical office building gets built, the four stories, that will get us over the 0.4 for the entirety of South Town. Now, onto my prepared remarks, if I may. I'd like to thank staff for their guidance and their exemplary effort to put together the presentation this evening. We have really just a couple of issues that we'd like to discuss. There's 23 conditions contained in the staff report, and we have an issue with just two of them. And... Help me, Mike. There we go. Thank you. Maybe I'm pressing the wrong button. I apologize.
The, if you could point it in that direction, that might help.
Okay, thank you. Can you?
I'll go ahead and advance the slides.
Thank you, Mike. Next slide, please. The two conditions that we have an issue with are condition number 13, condition number 14. On the screen right now is the text of condition 13 and 14. The first condition, 13, is requiring us to extend an ingress lane past the pedestrian crossing location at the Kohl's Department Store. And as a result of that, there would be three lanes, two ingress lanes and one egress lane in front of Kohl's and then in front of the shop space, all the way to the west where Penn intersects, where the drive aisle intersects with Penn. The next one, item number 14, requires us to accommodate some of the requirements that were laid out in the traffic study. And now I'd like to just advance to the exact language of the traffic study. Thank you. This kind of lays out, this is an excerpt from the traffic study itself, talking about the extension of the ingress lane and talking about the raised pedestrian crossings for the locations of both the Kohl's Department Store and the planned Dick's store. We think that, we would like to propose an alternate solution tonight, and I'm going to lay out some issues on why we think that our alternate is a better solution for the project than what was proposed by the Bolton and Mank traffic study. Mike, if you'd go to the next slide, please. Our first is that we recommend the extension, the recommended extension is outside of what we had planned to improve with the eastern side of South Town being improved. This is clearly on the western side. Our anticipated plan was to come up with one complete solution for the western side of South Town Shopping Center when that was redeveloped and not do these, implement these projects one at a time. And so the project that's being, or the extension that's being proposed is kind of a one-time extension. We'd like to kind of continue to look at that as a total sum instead of just one component. Next slide, please, Mike. And we continue to assert that the lane as proposed does not enhance the traffic situation, and more importantly, it doesn't enhance the pedestrian-friendly and the pedestrian-safe environment that we're trying to achieve at South Town. That's kind of evidenced by the fact that Bolton and Mank included putting a raised pedestrian crossing in at that location. We haven't found any other location, by the way, where there's three lanes of traffic in front of a Kohl's Department Store entrance. We've looked at as many as we could in the metropolitan area and couldn't find a similar circumstance. Item number three, we don't wish to eliminate additional retail parking that would be taken up by this driveline. Number four, please. We continue to assert that the new south driveline, and by the way, the demolition of the Toys, Herbs, and Shop Space is going to allow us to have an east-west access point from one end of South Town all the way to, from Penn to Knox that never existed before because of the shop space and the Toys and Herb space being in the way. So we're asserting that there's going to be more traffic carried on the south side, certainly than there ever has been before. Item number five, please, Mike. Then with the closing of Penn Avenue, that's going to be contemporaneous with the completion of the I-35 and 494 improvements, there will be no access to Penn Avenue from I-35 northbound or I-35 southbound. So 82nd Street is going to be the reliever for that traffic, and that means that they're going to be coming in not on Penn, but rather on Knox, they being the traffic. Number six, we have removed 180,000 square feet of space, and we're only putting 120,000 square feet back into the phase that we're discussing this evening. And so we'd like to extend out as many improvements as we can because we're actually putting less retail space in there than what was there previously. That won't be the case when we build the medical office building, but we'd like to see exactly what the traffic circumstances are rather than projecting them with the addition of the Dick's House of Sports numbers. of Sports. Number eight, please. And the installation of a raised pedestrian crossing will require a complete redo of the Kohl's Department Store entrance. We don't have that planned. We don't have Kohl's approval to do that. Kohl's would require that approved, that approval. So the next slide, please, Mike. So given all of that, what you see on the screen right now is an is an alternate plan where we're proposing that instead of having the third ingress lane go all the way to the entrance level of the, so it's at the same plane as the entrance of the Kohl's store, that we would extend it by one parking bay. And you can see that that would add another 60 feet or so to the right turn opportunities for ingress traffic. That keeps in place our electric car charging stations. It eliminates the need for a raised pedestrian crossing because there's still only two lanes that pedestrians have to cross from parking into the front door of both the retail shop space to the left and the Kohl's entrance to the right. And finally, we were aware of a complaint or a comment from Citizen referring to the Penn American Plan, among others, and we would be happy to address any of those issues that might come up. But that is the extent of the issues that we have with the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that might come up.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cunningham, I'm sure I'm not the only person that's curious when I read the staff report, seeing a Dick's Sporting Goods going in here and noting there's one across the street. What's the plan there?
I can address that a little bit. First of all, the Dick's Sporting Goods store that is across the street was built as a Galleon's, if you remember that, from over 25 years ago. It was was built by a different retailer altogether. You might have noticed that Dick's House of Sport actually closed the store that's at Hopkins Crossroads and I-394 and moved into Ridgedale Shopping Center because their their format is different than the Galleon's format was. So they had to sit with those spaces until the passage of time and the lease expirations. So Best Buy actually owns the Dick House of Sport that's in Richfield. So Best Buy, from what we understand, is looking to have that space back so that they could use that as a retail, kind of experimental theater, if you will, to figure out what works and what doesn't for their retail stores. So likely to be backfilled by some level of Best Buy, and this new store would be Dick's actual format that they're doing across the country.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Cunningham, in terms of the overall layout of the site, I was just noticing that Dick's development is, it's obviously one building over from the corner of the site, right? So the Dick's building appears to be a certain development in the near future, whereas the medical office appears to be planned into the future. I guess what are the alternative scenarios of medical office is not likely, or the market doesn't support medical office in that location? Do you guys have any thoughts about how that location could be developed, just given the space that it's got? And I assume the medical office is a significant component of the Florida area ratio that we're talking about for the overall development?
Commissioners, Chair, Mr. Curry, the reason that we have the House of Sport located in the position that it is, is we do think that the House of Sport will function as a major anchor for South Town. It will add some of the luster back that Montgomery Wards and Herburgers and Toys R Us used to have back in the retail heyday of South Town. The, you know, this is really at the kind of 50-yard line of South Town. It's got exposure to I-494, some level of exposure to I-35W, and it's certainly going to be right in the front of every retail visitor. So we think that it's it's positioned properly. And then with regard to the medical office building, the intersection, as we understand, at the intersection of I-494 and 35W is the busiest intersection in the state of Minnesota. If you drive around the metropolitan area, you'll note that there are medical office buildings here and there and everywhere, and they really do like to have some level of presence on the freeways where they can have some level of signage and level of identity for their patients, customers, employees. So we think that this is a great medical office location. However, we can't really pursue the medical office building right now because we have a sewer limitation that you may be aware of. So we are going to have to wait until the sewer conditions become more favorable before we can actually start to market that as a medical office building, which might be as late as the end of 2027. And certainly circumstances can change between then and now. One of the things that it might change into, to be perfectly frank, is another mixed-use building, as we got proposed on the northwest corner of Knox and American.
Okay. Thank you. So then, in terms of the FAR, do you anticipate, and I believe FAR is measured in terms of the total floor area ratio, or total floor space, all the floors added up, over the, over the total development area? So if the medical office does not work, do you anticipate alternative uses meeting that Florida area ratio that the city is looking for?
We think that that's a requirement. That's not a wish. So the answer to your question directly, Mr. Curry, is that we would anticipate that whatever we put on that northeast corner of the existing South Town Shopping Center will be multi-floor and will get us to the .4 FAR.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So just for clarification, Mr. Cunningham, with Dick's House of Sport and the proposed medical four-story office building you're showing, you said that would be an FAR that exceeds 0.4? Is that correct?
We believe that to be the case, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question about the future medical office proposal. And given the massing on the map that Mr. Centenario can pull up, it looks as though there wouldn't necessarily be space for additional parking and therefore difficult to meet that condition of additional landscaping that would be required for the plan. I know that it would be just a, it's just the massing, not necessarily the final development plan, but all that to say, do you anticipate a level of shared parking, a shared parking agreement?
The Commissioner and Chair, we anticipate that there's going to be a need to have some level of structured parking, both in conjunction with the medical office building. I don't know if this laser pointer works. It does. This massing right here is intended to be a structured parking. We don't have the calculations done yet on exactly how many levels that would be, exactly how many parking stalls it would be. We do anticipate that there would be some level of surface parking, and generally, with respect to a medical office building, that would be handicap parking and drop-off area, along with the landscaping that would be required for us to meet the code minimums at least. But there would be a structured parking element that would serve both the medical office building and in a future phase that could be on what is now the Lucky 13 site.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate that. I do see, we have our engineering staff in in our chambers, wondering if we could invite them up for a couple of questions.
Chairman, Commissioners, depending on what the question is, we'd be happy to answer.
Sure. I think my initial question was based on the proposal given by the applicant about the conditions, number 13 and 14, and sort of the traffic flow and how you see that working out. What is your initial thoughts about that and the connection to the Bolton and Mank study?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the consultant is here that prepared that report, and they have a presentation, they have slides planned. They could give that presentation or just ask specific questions of the Commission if you'd like, however you'd like to approach that issue.
Sure, we can invite the engineering or the Bolton and Mank. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Neimeth here with Bolton and Mank. I think Mike's got a couple of slides, just to talk about that one. Just talking about, I think it was number 13, the extension of the second lane further into the site. It's primarily a safety issue than it is more a operations-type issue. So just looking at where the existing crosswalk is leading over to Applebee's. So the current right turn lane is about 60 feet after that. So, I mean, just looking at the next picture. So as a vehicle and a driver is on the right side lane or the outside lane, to make that decision of whether to, whether they want to go enter into that right turn lane or move over a lane and change lanes, occurs at the same place where that pedestrian crosswalk is. So that's a safety concern we have of just a vehicle's driver's attention between watching forward for pedestrians and then looking back over their back shoulder to look and make sure they have space to move over. So it's very, a short distance for that current movement that's out there. Next slide. So the original plan, just that we had received from the developer, this, we're just kind of going back, originally showed that a second lane going all the way over to Morgan Circle. We agree with that assessment and including that full lane all the way through to there. So that's, that's, that's part of what, you know, maintaining that second lane through there and then showing the raised crossings at that Kohl's. Next one, Mike. So the revised developer's proposal to end that lane earlier, based on, you know, pedestrian safety in front of that Kohl's, we agreed that, yeah, having three lanes, having only two lanes, one lane in each direction in front of that Kohl's crossing, agree with that. That, again, it's not an operational concern to have that that longer lane all the way through. One thing we did say is the original proposal was to add about an extra 60 feet with just that first parking stall. So it'd get it to about 120 feet from past that pedestrian crossing. Looking at the Ashtoe Green Book for a change lane maneuver within an urban situation, which we consider a parking lot to be an urban situation with a lot of pedestrians, a lot of vehicles moving, a lot of vehicles parking, that there's, there needs to be that extra space to be able to make a lane change maneuver. By the Ashtoe Green Book, so it's the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, says that should be 400 feet. That that person needs to be able to make that decision in. So it's deciding whether to make the movement, so deciding that the lane's going to be ending, I need to make the move over, making sure that they have space to be able to move over and actually make the lane change maneuver. Recognizing that, you know, that's a recommended, and looking at our minimum times that a pedestrian, at least a vehicle driver would understand of, make the decision that they need to change lanes and then actually make the changing maneuver, we could run down to the minimums, which includes, which actually calculates out to be 195 feet. So by getting the next two drive aisles and making that lane drop two drive aisles further, gets us about 200 feet. So it reaches that 195-foot estimation for making a safe lane change maneuver, as long as that person knows what's going on. So we're willing to be able to do that. Additionally, we are still saying that we do want that that raised crossing in front of Kohl's. Recognize, yes, that is not, you know, it's, they are proposing a raised crossing further east, recognizing that some of the same traffic will be crossing here. We don't want to treat those ones differently. We also got a raised crossing where the existing one with Applebee's is. So we've got, you know, these major crossings, keep a consistency for that and a extra pedestrian safety in front of the Kohl's. So raised crossing there would actually be more of a raised intersection because it will be covered in kind of that that drive aisle, too. But recognizing a lot of pedestrians, a lot of people getting off in wheelchairs, anybody else that's coming through on there, would be using the drive aisle to travel through there. So getting that in there. So that's, that's the reason that we've provided allowance to, you know, end it before the, for the Kohl's, but not, a little bit further than that they're currently providing or proposing. Next slide. So just kind of, just reiterate what we have there. So currently, it's about 60 feet. They're, they're proposing to extend it to 120 feet, and we're proposing to at least get it up to 195 feet. So minimum of 195 feet to meet that Ashtoe requirement for a lane change maneuver. So at least that answers that part of the question.
Thank you.
If there's anything else, let me know.
Any questions for Bolton and Mank? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We do have a public hearing with this item, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to testify can come up. There's a sign-in sheet.
Hello, my name's Robert Coleman. I'm going to be much quicker this week. I just believe that the, the proposal does not meet with a lot of the, a lot of the guidance that is in the Penn American Plan in terms of the design. Like, it has the, the land use and the zoning, it is, it seems to be in accordance with that and with the fact that the, I did not understand that the floor area minimum would be fulfilled by the second phase, but the fact that they're only coming up to us with two phases, the rest of it, they don't really want to put down whether they, they're, you know, they, it takes a lot of money to prepare these kinds of projects, and having to come up here a bunch of times doesn't make a lot of sense financially. And the fact that they're not actually coming up with, you know, the future phases beyond that at the northwest corner of Knox and American, it kind of seems to me like they're not super sure whether that's happening anytime soon. And what is in front of you right now of the, doesn't really meet what the Penn American Plan says. I think that in terms of the goals that are in Section 4 of the Penn American Plan, it doesn't fulfill 1.1, 2.4, 3.1, and 4.2. And in terms of like what the, I, I'm sure you've read what I was hoping to have in the packet, but that goes into a lot more depth about exactly what design features don't, aren't shown there. But the vision of the Penn American Plan is not being fulfilled in this. The, the new roadways that it says to create are not accommodated here. It really just maintains the, the mid-century design, and it doesn't really do anything transformational. It's, it's basically the, you know, the Hy-Vee proposal from a few years ago, but this time it's the Dick's House of Sports. I ask that you reject it. And we, oh, I, I actually had a, I had one more question of staff. How, in the Penn American Plan, it said that by 2030, we would be at 75% sewer capacity, and then at 2050, it would be around 100. I'm just wondering how we got to today where it seemed like the Phase 1 and 2 would get us to that 100% capacity, except now that they're saying that they don't even think that they're going to be able to do Phase 2 without more sewer capacity. How that's all going to be, I'm wondering how we got to today on that.
That is a great question. We can keep that in consideration. After we close the public hearing, when we're in discussions, we can ask staff if we so choose. Any additional testimony from the public?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioners, probably should get in front of one of the two mics. My name is Bill Griffith, representing Kraus Anderson. I want to address the, a little bit of the history. I think it's important, as the Commission considers this phased plan for South Town, to understand why in 2015 Kraus Anderson would negotiate a development agreement as a predecessor to a rezoning of this site. would negotiate a development agreement as a predecessor to a rezoning of this site. And reference has been made to the Penn American Plan, a very significant plan, a significant vision of the city. It has to work, obviously, with a shopping center that, you know, has been there much longer than the Penn American Plan. So a couple of the hallmarks of the, the development agreement, which was part and parcel of that rezoning, as Mr. Centenario said early in his remarks, one of the keys to that agreement was that South Town could continue to exist as a shopping center and update and make minor revisions to the existing site, because obviously there are 10-year leases, there's extensions, there's 20-year leases, and so obviously, South Town is not going to shut down perhaps like the Ford Plant in St. Paul or other redevelopment sites where they're completely demolished and you start over. This is a, this is a living shopping center, this is a shopping center under traffic with visitors. And so one of the key hallmarks of that agreement was that the shopping center, as it existed at that time in 2015, could continue to modernize the buildings that exist, but at the same time, be moving to higher density, be moving to .4 and ultimately in some corners of the site to 1.0. And so I, I want the commission to understand that in any setting where you're dealing with an existing shopping center, an existing commercial setting, you have cross parking, you have leases, you have extensions, you have easements of record, you have a very significant power line through the center. If you, if you look at that visionary plan, and it was, it was a drawing, by the way, it was somebody's rendering of what it might look like, you know, if redeveloped, it completely ignores the fact that there's high tension power lines and a significant fall zone throughout the shopping center. It also suggests that there might be roadways going north and south and east and west. Obviously, that has to make sense for the incremental redevelopment of the shopping center, but also for the owners and the tenants. And so, so a couple of those points that are kind of baked into that understanding, which is in fact an agreement, is as development occurs, it would be in, in higher density. And this plan is just that, we have a two-story Dick's, a four-story medical office building as part of the preliminary development plan, and as you saw the massing plan, the aspirations are for significantly more density tied, obviously, to sewer improvements in the district. I want you to understand that because if, if someone could wave a wand and build, you know, something today with, with no constraints, it would certainly look different than this plan. But this plan not only successfully tears down outdated buildings and, and replaces them with modern buildings of higher density, but it also paves the way for real term and, real near-term improvements, which will be built with the Dick's House of Sports, including, we haven't referenced it, underground stormwater containment with, with modern day infiltration and so forth. That's something that doesn't exist today. The, the addition of upgraded lighting and landscaping and islands and so forth, pedestrian access to the, the bikeway that's part of the transit facilities. So there's a lot baked into even this first phase, but we have to understand that, that the reason we came together in 2015 at the, at the outset of the Penn American Plan and came to a, an actual agreement was to make sure that we both, you know, captured the opportunity for the vision, but dealt with the reality that this is a shopping center that was first constructed in 1960. It's just a, just a little bit younger than I am. So that's, that's the reality on the ground, that's the reality in the marketplace, and I wanted you to understand that because as we moved, moved to higher density, it's going to take some flexibility to get it right and to, to do it incrementally. Thank you.
Thank you. There, is there anyone else in the chambers this evening who would like to testify on this item? Mr. Centenario, do we have anyone online?
Chair Albrecht, we have no one joining online, that's not staff.
Excellent. We'll give it one second if any additional testifiers want to come up. All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion to close the, the public hearing and a second. Now we have to do a vote, which will bear with us. All those in favor, and I think we will do a roll call vote.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookton?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Thank you, motion passes, the public hearing is closed. Comments, discussion from the commission, Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Centenario, just want to ask a question for clarification, so the applicant told us with the medical office building and the Dick's House of Sports, they would be over the 0.4, that seems in conflict with what the staff report was, could you clarify that for me?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioners, when I did my review, essentially, to calculate FAR, you have to take the entire site, which is a massive property, obviously, and then to use your, as your denominator, and then you have to add the existing proposed and the future floor area. And so when I did that calculation, I did include the medical office building as identified in the staff report, and that's where I got the .37.
You did not include the medical office building?
I did.
I'm understanding from the applicant, they also included the medical office building.
Yeah, the, Commissioner, I've, I came up with a different.
So we have a different.
calculation, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you, sorry, Madam Chair, this is a point I probably should have made in my last remarks, but I think there, it's important to get into the record that the agreement refers to the development and the city code refers to the site. And so from day one, we have told the staff that we view that calculation differently than they do, based upon the agreement. The agreement supersedes, when it's in conflict, it supersedes the city code. And so we have always, and Mr. Toski's online, the Assistant City Attorney, we've said from day one that we view the, the words of that agreement to mean that we calculate based on the development. That's what Bob Cunningham said in his remarks. And so we, we get to a different number because we calculate it based upon the site that's under development, the, the development pad itself, not the entire shopping center. And that goes back to 2015 where Ken Vinge and I were negotiating with the city and we said, it will be impossible, in our view, to come into compliance at each phase when you're going to take a shopping center that is largely one-story in height. And I appreciate you allowing me to come up and clarify that because it isn't just a matter of us coming to two different numbers, we start from a different denominator. And we do that based upon the development agreement that we entered into in 2015. Thank you.
Commissioner Cookton, do you have any additional questions?
Mr. Centenario, so your calculation of floor area ratio is the existing South Town, Dick's, and the medical office building divided by the entire area of that?
Commissioner Cookton, that's correct.
And their FAR number is just Dick's and the medical office building divided by the area of that?
Commissioner Cookton, I, I can't claim to fully understand what the calculation that the applicant used.
Okay.
I can only speak to what I did.
Sure. So can you speak to the agreement a little further of how you, how you or the city is interpreting the agreement of the 0.4 minimum?
I would have to defer to Mr. Toski, I, I'm not well-versed in the development agreement, but Kevin, perhaps you could provide some clarity?
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner, Commissioner Cookton, Chair, Commissioner Cookton, most of our discussions centered around the C5 portion of the site and the requirement to get up to point, or 1.0. So a lot of our discussions had to do with not granting flexibility on that portion of the site and then leaving it kind of vindicating what the development agreement said about that portion. Now, staff has come up with a .37, which is the whole site. K Kraus is coming up with a different, with a different site, but what I think is the development agreement does, it, it's development by development, I think that's what was contemplated. So I, I agree with Mr. Griffith on that point, but the C5 portion is where most of our discussions centered around, so that would be my take on the, on the 2015 agreement. I wasn't around for it, obviously, I started in 2022, so I don't know, you know, all the background that went into that, but that seems to be the import of it based on the language.
Thank you, Mr. Toski. Any questions or discussion from the commission? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. First, you know, I'm glad that we have the opportunity to develop the Dick's site already. Good to have new development going in there right away. You know, in terms of the FAR, I totally understand kind of the challenge with trying to stick to an FAR over an extended time period or over multi-phase development because I don't think we want to pigeonhole the applicant on a future phase, making a portion of the site completely undevelopable, if you have to achieve a certain amount of space and, and achieve a certain amount of development over a certain site, right? And then I guess, you know, in terms of the, the traffic, you know, I think the applicant's points are, are smart, I mean, we definitely want to make the area pedestrian-friendly. I'm not a traffic expert, so I can't say anything about, you know, how that exactly works, but I think anywhere we can reduce the number of traffic lanes is probably a good thing for a shopping area in the city of Bloomington, so overall, I'm, I'm supportive of the development. I guess, you know, the power lines are obviously a challenge and are immovable, you can't move those in any way. It would be nice to have less, have a smaller sea of parking than what was there today and a smaller sea, and I think is what's in the plan even, so, you know, I don't know what opportunity there is to have more, you know, increase the density of parking in a smaller space and maybe make, put that area to a different use such as, you know, we don't, it sounds like ponding, is it necessary because it's all underground, but something other than a sea of, of parking, so honestly, the parking is just kind of my only restoration with the plan so far today.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Any other discussion items? Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Toski, sometimes we're cautioned against changing conditions that are in the proposed motion. Is there any issue if we were to, say, take the, the recommendations of the applicant for items 13 and 14 this evening?
Chair, Commissioner Cookton, no problem with that, we just want to make it clear on the record what the motion is and what it's doing. You know, if you're going to, I'll take that back, I, I was going to say something else, but no, as long as we have a, a clear record and what that motion is, you're fine to delete and, and add conditions, but make it clear, so we have a good record.
Thank you, Mr. Toski. Another question, if I may?
Go ahead.
Mr. Centenario, what are, what are we looking at here for an agency action deadline, having pushed this back a week already because of last week's issue? Are we up against it or let's just hypothetically say we wanted to continue this to our next meeting, would we be in trouble?
Sure, Commissioners, we did extend the agency action deadline to 120 days, so if you do choose to continue, we would be able to follow through on a planning commission and then a city council meeting following that and still be within the, the agency action timeline.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Well, I will add my two cents, then it looks like you had something to say as well, Commissioner Cookton. I think this is a very tricky site and I appreciate the members of the public who did testify and the ideas brought forth and similar-sized projects in the development. I think what we have here specifically for this site is a bit of an infill situation plus you're really anchored, though, we, we're thinking of Dick's House of Sport as the anchor, 494 is the anchor. We're limited about what businesses want to be right against the freeway, and typically that's going to be businesses with, that need high visibility. It seems like Dick's House of Sport is a, a good selection for that, I think medical office generally is a good selection for that. Would I like to see more dense development similar to what is across the street with the Fresh Time and the apartment units over there? Absolutely. I still think there's time, which is, is on our side, and being on this commission for five years plus, I think we have seen some ideas and some proposals come through and not, and not have legs, and so I'm, I'm happy to see that this, this proposal actually has legs. Regarding conditions 13 and 14, I would be okay with the applicant's proposal as a sort of middle ground between, between what was suggested in the study and, and suggested by staff. I do find, I, I actually had, used that chiropractor over there for a few times, and I, I have found that intersection, that area, very dangerous. It is, there's a lot of people that blow right through there, go through in that turn lane and end up going straight, so I think we need to find a solution there. I understand that, you know, digging up in front of coals and having an agreement with coals, yes, that, that is a, a barrier, however, I do think that there is, there's a reason why the study suggested that change and then the, the city staff also agreed with that. So I like the middle ground that we've found here, I'm supportive of that with the caveat that, and maybe it needs to be a condition, it needs to be addressed moving forward in the future, but maybe not necessarily with this final development. And other than that, I am supportive. Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Centenario, one more question if I could, could you just speak to the sewer capacity here, I know there was a, a question about that, where are we at and what's the plan for that?
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cookton, I am going to defer to Julie Long, the city engineer.
Can, can you promote me, please?
Yes.
All right, sewer X availability charges and where we stand today. On this map, you can see a bunch of different lines up here, where I'm circling kind of around the 24, is where the South Town Center is, you can see both a red and a blue line coming through here. That, those are a couple of different proposed diversions for sanitary sewer. One of the interesting challenges Bloomington has is we're a fully developed suburb and most of our development has happened with single-family homes and shopping centers such as South Town. And as we look to densify, we have existing sewer for those single-family homes and the shopping center, but if we're going to start building multifamily dwellings and increase the floor area ratio of those buildings, that also increases the sewer need. So in certain areas of town, we have needs for additional sewer capacity projects. So right now, we have a study going on that is on our Let's Talk Bloomington site, talking about sanitary sewer capacity funding. So how do we pay for those public infrastructure improvements? You can see the South Town area is in one of the red circles of now because the need is now. All the black dots show anticipated development and then you'll also see some near-term sewer needs. So those are the sewer needs we're looking at in general and in specifics contexts with regard to South Town. When they demolished Herburgers and Toys R Us, they get to capture those fixture units, like within the bathroom, but as you can imagine, Toys R Us has bathroom needs or kitchen needs way smaller than some of the other proposals of a medical office building. So that's where the raw. So that's where the rub is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Any questions? Miss Long. Thank you.
Commissioner Curry had a question.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Curry.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. What about, how does that compare to regular office or other multi-store uses or apartments here?
With the sewer availability charge, it's, the unit is one, and its equivalent is a single family home. So each different kind of use, whether you're a regular office or you're a multifamily, they they have percentages. This is a point four, that's a two point oh. And you add the plumbing fixtures together if you don't have the use category with Met Council to come up with what your actual equivalency is.
So I guess, yeah, and I suppose it's difficult to say that how a different use, how much water it would consume relative to medical office, so.
There's a chart, unfortunately. I don't have access to it immediately. Thank you. Any other discussion items? Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Kind of just go through my thoughts. Thank you, Miss Long. So, you know, when I look at the Pan American District Plan and all the pretty graphics some artists put together, it's it's very nice. And and I too wish we would have something like that, but there has to be teeth in the the plan, right, to us and to enforce something like that. And there are certain things we have teeth on, the zoning and the guiding and other things. But we don't have teeth on how we want things to look. We don't have that type of authority. And so I I I agree with the member of the public that wishes this looked different and maybe was something different. But I don't, the way I review this, I don't think we have the authority to to say how things look or how we maybe wish what applicant was coming here or not. So moving on to more some of the specifics, in regards to conditions thirteen and fourteen, I am supportive of what the engineers at Bolton and Mank proposed to us. So that was keeping the raised crossing and then extending sort of, I think it was two hundred feet or whatever that was, the couple of extra drive aisles for that right turn lane. So that's what I support with conditions thirteen and fourteen. There were a few other requests for deviations. The landscaping, short, I'm okay with that. The parking is short, I'm okay with that. The one I'm most hung up on is the floor area ratio, and I still can't quite understand where we're at with that. Mr. Centenario is getting this zero point three seven. The applicant's getting more than point four. And I don't know if I should keep chasing how the applicant got to above zero point four because I'm not like, that's a kind of a deal for me. I'm not sure I can support this if they're under the zero point four. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'll leave it at that for a minute.
I I hear the issue with the FAR because I know that that is sort of the the checkbox that we're looking for. However, it's a bit of a moving target, given that what is proposed in terms of square footage for medical office and maybe the calculation for that could potentially change. And therefore, they could meet that point four FAR depending on the design and the fill of the building.
Yeah, so I think where I'm hung up is it's it's the approval of the preliminary development plan. So I'm okay with the final development plan. It's the preliminary development plan. So it's the plan that says here's what we're where we're gonna end up with. And if that doesn't equal zero point four, I would not be okay with that.
Sure, sure.
And I believe that's the number that Mr. Centenario was getting, is that for the site on the preliminary development plan, it's less than zero point four, and that's a hangout for me.
Got it.
Chair Albrecht, Commissioner, so what I'm sharing on the screen now was something that is from the applicant. And so, you know, depending on what areas you use for your your site area, you're gonna come up with different numbers in terms of FAR. And so when this might, this better illustrates what the applicant, what their position is. If you look at the number one, these are by lot area consistent with the preliminary plat. So the lot area one, two, three, four, that is lots one, two, three, four on the preliminary plat. And so you can see that if you look at lot one, the applicant did not even calculate an F A R. They essentially just deducted that from FAR consideration. Lot two, that's the Dick's House of Sport. You can see the one hundred and twenty thousand square feet, and then that's where they came up with this point five nine FAR. So obviously, that phase, if you're looking at that phase in isolation, it exceeds the point four minimum. And then also, if you look at lot three, again, in isolation, you have the lot area, you have the one hundred and five thousand square feet, and that's where they're showing a point four five. Now, the lot four, that's the northwest corner of Knox and American. Again, this is purely conceptual, so these numbers are are very, the numbers that they're showing in terms of floor area, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, I don't, that's not really a real number per se. It's just a, it's a mod for modeling, and that is shown at one point one five. So it it really does matter on what you consider the site area on how you're calculating the FAR. So what I what I did is I included the entirety of South Town as a site area and then the physical improvements that they're proposing between lots one, two, and three.
So, Mr. Centenario, your calculation was the total of lots one, two, and three?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair.
If it would help, I could read the development agreement provision into the record so we all are on the same page about what it actually says. I think that would make some sense here.
Yes, please. That sounds great. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith referenced this earlier, but I think it would help if we all had the language. So I'm reading, this is the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. This was executed back in twenty fifteen. So it says, except as provided in this paragraph, development, so the word development is used within the South Town Shopping Center, shall not be required to meet a minimum floor area ratio greater than point four zero unless the parties to this agreement mutually agree in writing to modify this provision. So that's what we have regarding floor area ratio. There's another part that deals in this agreement that deals with the C five area. And we preserve what the development agreement says regarding the C five area in the conditions that are proposed to you. So that's what the language says. The word, the operative word there is development. So that that lends some, at least guidance to what Mr. Griffith said earlier, that we we look at this as chunk by chunk of development as it occurs on the property or on the whole site. Okay, so that that's what the development agreement says, and that seems to be the import of it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Toski. Commissioner Cookden.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that clears it up a lot for me. So the way I'm interpreting this, which I think I've now come around, is that it's the developments. It's each phase of the development individually has to equal or exceed zero point four. And based on the numbers we just saw, they are. And so in that case, although maybe Dick's Sporting Goods isn't exactly what I'd like to see here, I'm able to make the required findings and would be in support of this application.
Any other discussion? Mr. Centenario, if you would pull up those motions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I I think it maybe is worth us discussing a little further, conditions thirteen and fourteen. I wasn't sure if you and I were quite aligned and Commissioner Curry were quite aligned. Whatever motion we make is gonna have to reference those, and so we
Absolutely.
should understand where we're at here. So for clarification on my end, I am in support of what Bolton and Mank has recommended for conditions thirteen and fourteen, but I certainly am interested in what other people are considering.
And I guess I am in, I'm in support of the applicant's proposal with the thought that additional development and improvements to the site will make that a safer spot for pedestrians and vehicles, but doesn't need to happen necessarily in in conjunction with this phase of development.
Mr. Centenario, can you remind me what the applicant's recommendation was?
Yes, Commissioners. Commissioners, so what's on the screen is what's, oh, I'm sorry. Going back and forth is a challenge. Commissioners, what you're, what you're seeing on screen is what the applicant is proposing. And so if you look at the various, how I help, what helped me understand what's being proposed is just looking at the various drivelanes between the north-south drivelanes. And if you can see, as of today, if you see this curb, there's a parking alley here that forces you that, you know, that that's where the lane ends, and it forces you to turn right if you're really not paying attention. So really, what the applicant's proposing is just to shift that same condition sixty feet to the east. So that's what the applicant is proposing to do. The Bolton and Mank, with their proposal, is to shift it to this next aisle or driveline, just another sixty feet. So that, as I understand it, those those are the differences between what the applicant is proposing and what staff's recommendation is.
And also the raised crossing.
Certainly, Commissioner, absolutely. It's a good point.
Discussion on this portion of the conditions. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree with you, Chair, in your position on on these conditions. I mean, it, it, to me, and I've driven that entrance or that ingress egress frequently. And I mean, the problem that I always see when I driving in that area is before you even get to that spot, it's coming off of, when I say Penn, right? Coming off of Penn into the main entrance there and then that first intersection. So I'm basically in the same position as you.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. I would agree with that. I do think that that first intersection, the one that is around the Applebee's, is probably the the main issue here. Commissioner Cookden, do you have any thoughts?
Well, my overall thoughts are, although I took one traffic engineering class, which makes me mostly an expert, I'm not a full expert, and I'm just gonna trust the P Es on this one and and take their recommendation.
Alrighty. It looks, seems like we do not have consensus. Commissioner Isa, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with Chair Cookden and Commissioner Curry on going with what the consultants suggested. So that's my thought.
So for clarification, I'm a bit confused. You're, you're, you're supportive of the applicant's proposal or supportive of the, of Bolton and Mank's?
Of Bolton and Mank's change.
Okay. So, all right, additional discussion around this item. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Cookden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Centenario, hypothetically, if we were to have a split vote, what does that mean?
It's times like these I wish Glenn wasn't on vacation. Excuse me. You know, I, generally, my understanding is that there's four affirmative votes are needed for a positive recommendation to city council. And if, Mr. Toski, please correct me.
Chair, Commissioners, sorry to, sorry to jump in. You have, you have one member with a conflict of interest that he's not participating in this discussion. He's coming back for the next hearing. So right now, you have four members. So to form a majority, you need three. So a two to two would would mean the motion won't pass. You're welcome to form another motion after that to get some action. But a tie vote doesn't pass anything, so.
So that it goes to council with no recommendation, I believe is how that works, with a two to two vote.
Correct.
I'm curious, applicant, your thoughts on the change in the Bolton and Mank's proposal from a feasibility standpoint?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'd like to ask Bolton and Mank to clarify because I think what I heard was a middle position between their original proposal and their report. Our proposal is an alternative, and I believe they slightly tweaked their proposal or did not. And and so that's, that's a question I have. But but ultimately, we'd like you to vote on the project. And I believe, I'm just hearing, I'm not gonna say that I know all your votes, but I'm hearing there's consensus around the project. So perhaps you can break that down and support the project and leave the question of thirteen and fourteen to be resolved between staff, the applicant, and and prior to the council meeting. Because I think we prefer to have a recommendation for approval and not have it fall on a technical issue.
Commissioner Cookden.
But starting with, I I'm not sure if I heard something slightly different than what was in their report.
I would like to hear from them again, but Madam Chair, if I may first ask, is this a final decision by the planning commission or does this go to city council?
Great question. Thank you, Commissioner Cookden. This is, there will be a public hearing on this item September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, if it moves forward at the city council.
Thank you. I would be interested in hearing from Bolton and Mank again.
Yes, if you would, please.
Chair and Commissioners, I want to add, I am not in favor of deferring any, any decision on conditions to the city council and not simply not addressing them here. I think we need to address them.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so our original recommendation was to to carry that that second lane all the way to Morgan Circle. But our revised, based off of some of the comments made by the developer, was to have it a little bit longer than what they're proposing, is just one additional drive aisle to make that lane drop closer to that one hundred and ninety-five feet that we are looking to extend there. Additionally, adding the raised crossings in front of Kohl's, and we also recommended the raised crossing in front of the new Dick's House of Sport. Again, to try to keep, you know, those pedestrians, those major pedestrian crossings consistent in raised crossings throughout the site.
Thank you.
So Chair and Commissioners, if we can verbalize as best we can what the middle ground position is for a motion, if that's what's gonna happen, I would really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Kevin. Given this additional, given this additional information and maybe just clouds the water a little bit more, it sounds like from the applicant, they would rather have an approval moving forward than to, than to not. And so my thought is that I would be okay switching conditions thirteen and fourteen to the suggestion of Bolton and Mank's revised plan so that we can move this forward, which I think leaves us with a majority. Is anyone comfortable making a motion?
I would be comfortable making that motion, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I'll make a first motion that, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the city council approve preliminary and final development plans for a partial redevelopment of South Town Shopping Center, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff reports with the modifications to conditions thirteen and fourteen, taking Bolton and Mank's recommendations as presented, which would be raised crossings and the slightly extended right turn lane.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I think I would like to ask if Mr. Toski thought that was clear enough for a motion?
Great question. Mr. Toski?
Chair and Commissioner Cookden, I believe that's good. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we will do a roll call, please.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookden?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Commissioner Cookton.
Madam Chair, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend City Council approve a preliminary plat to subdivide seven eight zero three Penn Avenue South into four lots for future redevelopment.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I would appreciate a roll call.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookton?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. And the final motion, Commissioner Cookton.
Madam Chair, having been able to make the findings, I move to recommend City Council adopt a resolution approving a platting variance to allow park dedication fees to be paid at the time of building permit issuance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and appreciate a roll call.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookton?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, thank you. That item will, there will be a public hearing for that item at the City Council meeting on September thirtieth.
I'd like to just thank the Planning Commission for their deliberations this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can invite Commissioner Cunningham back. Welcome back. All right. Item two on our agenda also has a public hearing, and I believe we have a continuance requested for conditional use permit and major revision to final development plans for an event center at an existing building. Ms. O'Day, you have the staff report.
Yes, I have a very brief presentation, given this will be continued. So I just have basically one slide. So yeah, this is a proposal for an event center, CUP and Final Development Plan located at forty-two hundred West Old Chocopee Road. So the three, the address is forty-two hundred West Old Chocopee Road. The three detach buildings on the west side are part of the larger Valley West Shopping Center. The proposed event center would be located in the northern part of the building that's highlighted in red. Due to a notification issue that we had, we are proposing to continue this to the next meeting and open the public hearing tonight and hold it open until the next Planning Commission meeting.
Questions for staff? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber who would wish to testify on this item? Mr. Cincinero, is there anyone online?
Chair Albrecht, there is no members of the public online.
All right, thank you. We are looking for a motion then to keep the public hearing open and move that to the date certain, which is September nineteenth. And I believe, Mr. Toski, we need a location as part of this as well?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, if you just announced the date, the time, we already did the date, but the time, place, and day of the hearing.
Okay, we can we can do that if anyone is comfortable with that motion. Commissioner Cookton.
Madam Chair, I recommend continuing this item and the public hearing to September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at six PM Central in the Bloomington Council chambers at City Hall.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookton?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. All right, on to item three. We have a public hearing for a city code amendment, streamlining development ordinance. Mr. Johnson, you have the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Albrecht, and members. Good to see you all. This will be the third opportunity for us to discuss this item, in this case, under the public hearing with an actual ordinance in front of you.
Excuse my tardiness here.
Thank you, Mike. We'll see if this clicker works. If not, we might have to advance slides. Great, let's go forward here. Let's try it.
I'll just just let you know.
Sounds good.
Sorry.
So yeah, no, that's okay. We're a hurting unit tonight, apparently. No, it's no worries. So everything's all good. Yeah, so just to give you a quick agenda slide, so what we'll talk about here is background about this project, a summary of the ordinance that's put before you for your consideration this evening, just some kind of key discussion items that have come up since the study sessions. I want to report to you a little bit about the City Council reception of the of the materials and some of their guidance and how it interacts with with your review and elicit or provide some additional info about staff analysis since that point, and then just kind of outline what the next steps are of this project. So next slide, please. So just, we've, you know, we've gone over this a few times, so forgive me, maybe it's most for Commissioner Cunningham's benefit. But again, this project is an identified project on the Planning Commission work plan for this year. We spent a lot of oxygen on explaining why we think this is an important thing to do for Bloomington going forward and just in terms of the development environment, small business creation, housing development, other things. But basically, we boiled down what the goals are of this project into four criteria of what we are trying to do with our zoning approvals. And we're trying to lower barriers barriers overall in these four areas by reducing the time, the cost, and the complexity of what it takes to get development approval. And kind of the downstream effect of that is increasing certainty and confidence in the process for for the applicants. One thing I want to note that we've shared a couple of times as well is that you can't do this without really effective and quality and accurate internal review processes. So we have a pretty robust internal review process about development applications as, you know, from building permits all the way up to the largest applications that come before you. They all go through a pretty similar process. But just want to emphasize that it's important to maintain those things when you take some of these actions, moving things in a more streamlined and administrative direction. And then the other thing I want to say is that this was a comment by Councilmember Nelson at City Council. The last time we looked at some of these procedural elements of our zoning code was two thousand nine and twenty twenty-four, doing the math, you know, fifteen years is maybe a little bit too large of a gap in order to make more significant tweaks or do this formal evaluation. So I think a point I want to make here is that kind of similar to our comments about the signed ordinance, we want to be in a posture and a mode of ongoing evaluation about how these things are working and with real applications as we go forward. So it's important that staff continues to keep an eye on how these new procedures are performing if they're adopted and continue to make suggestions for tweaks on an ongoing basis to improve the quality overall. So yeah, thanks. Next slide. So again, maybe mostly for Commissioner Cunningham's benefit, but we started this project with eleven subprojects that we identified based on these four goals of reducing time, reducing cost, reducing complexity, increasing certainty. But if I can boil down this list of eleven really into four main things, what it really is, is it's talking about increasing administrative site plan approval, moving a number of conditional uses in terms of their status to a permitted use posture to kind of streamline some of those. The third thing, and maybe the one that includes most of these subprojects, is really granting the Planning Commission more authority to take final action on application subject to appeal. And then the last thing, the latest comer to the project was the reasonable accommodation process. We talked about how we didn't, how some cities have a formal way to seek reasonable accommodations related to accessibility or fair housing requirements. Bloomington does not have that process. We've been using the variance to do that. And so those are really the four main things that kind of tie all these eleven subprojects together. Next slide, please. So just to reiterate the process that we've gone through, so three study sessions have been completed following the initial research phase of the project. Planning Commission studied the bulk of the materials on May twenty-third. At the second study session, they reviewed more intently the list of conditional uses line by line, all fifty-seven of them. So it was very extensive and detailed. And then the City Council session on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. In terms of the staff recommendations and the planning recommendations, so those were all well received by the City Council. They were supportive of kind of the full menu of what's entailed in the ordinance. I'll get into a little bit more detail where they slightly diverged with the Planning Commission, and I think the main motivators or reasons there is that they wanted to leave kind of maximum flexibility as the ordinance proceeded through a public hearing process from a public notification standpoint. And so we can talk about that a little bit more in detail. But overall, the ordinance that's in your packet that's presented to you would amend Chapters two, fifteen, nineteen, twenty-one, and Appendix A. Next slide, please, Mike. Thank you. And what I plan to do here is just provide, this was provided to you in your staff report, but this is a bullet list from a sequential standpoint, what the changes are. First of all, the administrative code provision, so that has to do with administrative variances. If the Planning Commission were granted authority to approve variances, that would no longer be necessary. So the ordinance would remove those. Again, zone it relatedly zoning variance approval authority, so matching the cities of Edina, Needham Prairie, where their Planning Commission serves, is their Board of Appeals and Adjustment, subject to appeal. So the Planning Commission would have the ability to approve those requests, subject to a three-day three-day appeal process. The appeal to staff interpretation, this is a very rare application type. It doesn't come up very often. But again, with designating Planning Commission as the Board of Appeals and Adjustment, those would come to you first as opposed to a final action by the City Council. The certificate of appropriateness, that's an exceedingly rare application. It has to do with historic structures, but that's shifting the again, the approval authority from the City Council to the Planning Commission. Fifty-seven uses changed from conditional to permitted. I'll talk about that one in a little more detail, and I would say on this list, the ones that I have in bold font are the ones I plan to deep dive a little bit further on. Next slide, please. The tent permit extensions approval authority, similar about just granting Planning Commission the ability to take action on those. The mural permit appeal process, very similar to the interpretation appeal, granting the Planning Commission the ability to weigh in on those. The ADU and the two-family dwelling approval process, right now, those currently require final site and building plans to be approved. And under these changes, they would be treated similarly to a single-family dwelling as opposed to requiring that administrative zoning approval. So they would just go through a building permit process. Outdoor dining noise mitigation, this is a new one, is one I'll spend a little bit of time with, but this is staff trying to take all the feedback we've gotten, trying to get to the goals of making it more streamlined to get outdoor dining, but also deal with some of the potential nuisance characteristics that can happen with those areas. Signed variance approval authority, so again, similar to the variance, Planning Commission would have the authority to approve those, subject to appeal. Next slide, please. The first two bullets, so this has to do with expanding administrative approval of site plans in effect. So final site and building plans, which is code complying projects, and then final development plans, which of course is our plan development site plan equivalent. I'll talk about those in a little more detail. Conditional and interim use permit authority, so again, Planning Commission just taking the reins over all of them as opposed to having a sublist of some that the City Council is required to take action on. We have our application processes table. It's a very extensive table that lists where various applications go, who has the authority to approve them, what public hearings are required. So in order to effectuate all these changes, you have to change all these processes in your table. I mentioned the reasonable accommodation process in the zoning code, so that is within the ordinance. And then there's a few fee schedule changes that have to do with eliminating certain types of processes and adding some new ones and tweaking some. So those are just fee changes that really effectuate the the bulk of the ordinance. Next slide, please. So getting into the more meaty parts of the topics, I'll talk about these three main things. The conditional use changes, outdoor dining, and administrative site plan review, and kind of what the options there and what we looked at. So next slide. So as most of you know, when staff originally presented our recommendations to you, we presented fifty-seven uses that we were confident could shift from conditional to permitted. Many of you have taken action on many conditional use permits in your time on the board, so you're probably highly familiar with what that process looks like and what purpose it serves. But basically, through an evaluation that we went through on the front end about, you know, the strength of the city's use standards, the potential for nuisance, what districts those uses are allowed in, as well as some other miscellaneous criteria such as definitions and other things that can apply to certain uses. We were comfortable with this fifty-seven. The Planning Commission in their review in June did remove twelve of these uses, and so those were the forty-five that we presented to the City Council at their study session. I mentioned this before, but my my understanding and what I internalized from their discussion is that they were supportive of the of the Planning Commission recommendation. But they did want to include the full bulk of all of the staff recommendations in the ordinance that would be considered just from a notice perspective, so that if they wanted to include those later, they would have the ability to do so. So it's just a way to kind of increase maximum flexibility. The one thing I would say is that in drafting the ordinance, we have an option A, we have an option B. Option A is the full fifty-seven. Option B is the forty-five, the Planning Commission recommended. So depending on the nature, the direction you want to take this tonight, we certainly have the ability to to present that to the City Council in a way that makes it easy for them to take action in a way that either effectuates the Planning Commission's previous guidance or the initial staff recommendation. So I just want to be clear about that. Exhibit A in the staff report is this document. Hopefully you got to see it. But all the uses are listed by number, and the uses themselves that were not recommended to go forward as permitted uses are highlighted in yellow. Next slide, please. That's what that document looks like. But per request, I also have these twelve uses listed on the next slide, Mike. If we can do the next one, too. So these were the twelve uses that in June, the Planning Commission removed from their recommendation as far as changing to permitted. So I have these available for you if you want to discuss them. You know, as I mentioned, the discussion was pretty extensive in June. And from from my viewpoint, was all well-founded reasons and made sense to staff. And so this is available for you if you want to reference it in consideration of your action. So with that, that's kind of the main point around the conditional use component. That actually represents the largest content or bulk of the ordinance is all of those changes with respect to changing things from conditional to permitted, in some cases deleting certain uses or kind of making little tweaks as noted in the appendix at times. Next slide, please. So outdoor dining, this is one that continued to vex staff as we tried to come up with a creative solution to streamline development for outdoor dining while at the same time creating some kind of protections in place for the types of outdoor dining or the locations for outdoor dining that historically have caused some nuisance characteristics. And so the, we like the solution that we arrived at. We certainly can take feedback on it, whether it's the right way to go. But ultimately, what we included in this ordinance is that rooftop dining remains a conditional use. And historically, just anecdotally, I'm sure Mike can share the same thing, the rooftop dining areas historically have kind of caused the most noise complaints in our time, at least in the last ten years here in Bloomington. So we think it's wise, just given that the noise generation is not happening at great, it's happening from an elevated position. There tends to be lighting and other things on the rooftop that can also create some nuisance. So we just think it makes sense to keep that as a conditional use. And then, you know, that affects a very small number of venues in Bloomington. So the ordinance is, but the ordinance is suggesting that outdoor dining generally, and so what that will be is at great outdoor dining does become a permitted use. But what we had to do is kind of create a way to address some of these noise concerns, particularly when these facilities are in close proximity to residential uses. Excuse me. So what we did in order to kind of address that solution, what we thought is the best course is to really identify and apply stricter scrutiny to situations that are close to residential uses and that have larger numbers of seats. Small street or sidewalk cafes really don't generate Small street or sidewalk cafes really don't generate a lot of those nuisance characteristics because the volume of people, you know, 16 seats or less really isn't going to trigger that. It's where you have those very large outdoor dining areas that can get quite noisy or busy with traffic. So what we're suggesting is that for every outdoor dining area that meets these two criteria that we have listed on our slide, they would have to submit a noise mitigation plan for review and administrative approval as part of their application. And so again, the two criteria are, would be more than 16 seats, and when located within 250 feet of residential uses. And so you might ask, what would a noise mitigation plan look like? And that's a totally fair question. We have some experiences in working with some of the restaurants who have had noise complaints and dealing with some of the solutions that we think are viable. We do think it also is incumbent on the operators of these facilities to come up with solutions that address these concerns. And so what could it look like? It could look like strategic baffling, or some barriers in certain areas of the outdoor dining area, so constructing that into the patio. It could be strategic location of music or amplification devices that they utilize. It could be limitations on the hours or decibel levels of the music that they play. When do they turn off these systems at night, 10:00 PM, et cetera? This is all above and beyond our general noise ordinance, which of course does have maximum decibel levels that can be generated from commercial sites, which also goes in a downward direction when there are residential uses nearby. So this is kind of an extra layer of protection, if you will, for these situations. Yeah, so I mean, that's the solution there. It was one that staff discussed with planning commission and city council, and it was, I think we were all kind of in alignment of what we thought the goal should be, but we didn't quite have the, the solution fully formulated, or, excuse me, the solution fully synthesized when we were at the study session. So hopefully, that is received positively. The last key discussion item is, has to do with administrative site plan review. Here for a call when we were before you before, the two main options we examined were expanding the planning manager's existing approval authority, or going to full administrative site plan review. The planning commission favored expanding the planning manager's authority by increasing the size of new buildings and building additions that could be approved, as well as the number of dwelling units that could be approved administratively. That was in alignment with the staff recommendation. When we presented that to the city council, they actually asked staff to look at what would a full administrative site plan review process look like. So we did that, with one major caveat that kind of led us to where we were in drafting the ordinance. The major caveat was that they also wanted to not sacrifice some level of public notification as part of that process. And so what we did in order to try and effectuate that, or map out what that would look like, is it got us to the point where looking at calendars, looking at kind of phantom applications, if you will, what would it take to do a public notice akin to what they get for planning commission, think about 10 days, it takes multiple days to prepare the mailer, multiple days to actually have them receive it through the mail. What it looked like ultimately is a four to five-week process, which is very similar or mirrors that of what planning commission already does. And so we made a professional decision to draft the ordinance in such a way, which was consistent with the planning commission recommendation, as opposed to going with full administrative site plan review, because in our judgment, all of the benefits of streamlining were lost when considering inclusion of a full-blown notification. So in our view, if you're going to do a full-blown notice and have a public hearing opportunity, well, I'm sorry, let me back up, there wouldn't be a public hearing opportunity, but if you're going to do a full-blown notice, you might as well do it at the planning commission venue and have the opportunity to speak to it for larger projects. So that's kind of where we're at, hopefully that makes sense. Next slide, please, Mike. Thank you. So that's the bulk of kind of what I was going to present to you, just a reminder of kind of where we're at in the process, so now we're in the public hearing phase of the process. If you were to take some action on this applica, or on this ordinance this evening, it would go to the next city council meeting, available city council meeting for a hearing, and that would be September 30th. If they took action at that meeting, these changes could be in effect by mid-October. We have some things on this internal staff side of things to do, to kind of get our internal systems aligned with some of these new procedures. And so that'll probably take a little bit of time and be additional burden on our current planning staff. But yeah, that gives you kind of just the, the general schedule of what's kind of ahead. Next slide, please. So with that, we are recommending approval of this ordinance, and I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Johnson, you said this would go to city councils of a public hearing, that means it would not be on their consent agenda, is that right?
Chair, Commissioner Cookton, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Johnson, could you go back to your slide on outdoor dining?
I can, and thank you, Mike, for helping me.
Your two bullet points here, the second one is located within 250 feet of residential. How is that measured? Is that property line to property line, or is it the actual patio?
Thank you, yeah, no, it does specify that in the ordinance, and that would be measured from the outdoor dining area itself to the residential site. And to be specific, what that means is it's a residentially zoned and used and guided site. Sometimes we have like a property that's residential, but it's actually zoned industrial. So there's like, you know, some transition of use issues that can occur. But the way it's measured is from the patio, from the outdoor dining patio, to the residential site, and zoning, guiding, use.
And by residential site, that would be the property line?
Correct, yep.
And is that all residential, like, single and multifamily?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Johnson, I don't recall which slide this was on, but you had mentioned that one of the changes was that there would still be an appeals to staff interpretations process through the streamlining. I just want to be sure that members of the public, it, what I'm asking is, if an item is known to the public, gets noticed in the paper or is sent out to local residents, that if there is a concern from residents, that there would still, that item would still come to the planning commission for a public hearing and not just be administratively approved?
Mm-hmm.
Is that part, I am not a legalese scholar, so I'm
Sure, no.
Good at reading all the code section changes. And so I just want to ensure that that, that public will still have the ability to comment on items.
Yes, so thank you for that, Chair Commissioner Cunningham. So staff interpretation piece has to do with administrative actions that already occur. And so a business X wants to come up and say, you know, I think my parking island here meets your code. And we measure it and say, no, it doesn't. And so the, the element of the staff interpretation is that there are levers in city codes, and this is consistent amongst other communities. And that's frankly, what this change really has to do with, is designated the planning commission as the city's formal board of appeals and adjustment. So right now, the city council serves as the city's board of appeals and adjustment by designating the planning commission as such. It really just moves that authority to make a decision about an appeal of staff decision-making to you. In terms of like, when people receive notice, and that's kind of one of our, not concerns, but one of our considerations with respect to full administrative site plan review, is if you're going to give people a, a public notice, but there's still not a public hearing opportunity, sometimes that can drive some level of frustration or difficulty. It does provide the ability for them to appeal the planning manager's decision, so it does, still does have value. But basically, we want that with the, the recommendations we're making about the site plan review, is that anytime someone's receiving a notice, it should be attached or tied to a public hearing opportunity, in our view. That's just our, our view of it. And so that's kind of what's reflected in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I have one question, so that I should have stayed on the outdoor dining slide, but you don't have to bring it up again. There are requirements about noise, but not lighting. Have you seen that as an issue, as lighting is an issue, or was that part of your conversation?
Yeah, Chair, we haven't gotten complaints so much about the lighting, it's been driven more by noise. As you know, Bloomington, you often hear this term dark skies ordinance, or dark skies communities. Every city is a little bit different, and the devil's in the details about what that means, but we have a 90-degree cutoff requirement in our lighting ordinance, which means that the source has to be pointed down, you can't see visible sources that are more powerful. There obviously is architectural lights and things that do have a, a visible source. And so, I mean, frankly, we've gotten a lot of mileage out of that covered source or that 90-degree source requirement. It really knocks down a lot of the issues surrounding lighting complaints. But, all that being said, I know from working with our environmental health staff, is we still do also have a glare provision within our lighting ordinance, that is, if there is excessive glare coming off a source, sometimes it still complies with the power requirement, but has excessive glare. I know there has been instances where the city has utilized the code, that specific provision to effectuate a change, to get that source pointed somewhere else, or to shield that source. So generally, no, that hasn't been an issue with outdoor patios, just on the basis of our, Mike can attest that we're pretty strict in our lighting reviews, and maybe more so than some other communities. So I think we've probably knocked down a lot of those issues in the past through that.
Mr. Senator.
Chair Holberg, excuse me. One thing I would add is, to Mr. Johnson's point, just because I still have bruises from the stadium applications, we do have ways to measure actual lighting levels on the ground surface, and the city code does include a maximum light trespass level that we can very easily measure. Glare is extremely difficult to measure, actually, I don't know how you do measure it, but lighting level in terms of foot candles on the ground is very easily measured. And so if there's a patio near residential property, and there's complaints about just it being too, having too much light trespass, we can, we can measure that, and then take action in accordance with what we find.
Great, thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Johnson, going back to being a board of appeals for administrative decisions, how often does that happen today with the city council?
Chair, Commissioner Cookton, and I looked at Mike for more institutional, two brains is better than one. I don't think it's happened one time in my time here.
For, I'm sorry, for which type of?
For an appeal of a, a planning manager decision. And the reason, and I'll let him think about it, but the reason that it often doesn't happen is that if an application is not going to be approved administratively, typically they don't apply, or they withdraw, or it doesn't get to that point. And again, that kind of goes back to one of my earlier comments, earlier on in this process, is that if you're getting a lot of applications that result in denials that require you or the city council to deny an application, we're, as staff, are not doing enough on the front end of things to kind of have some guardrails. I don't want to say like a gate or anything, but people are free to apply, it's, they're totally allowed to apply, but we're not serving them well if we don't advise them what the correct outcomes are, in effect.
Commissioners, I can't think of a single appeal application that we've had in the last 10 years. We try not to, we try to avoid denials by finding a path that meets code and applicant's needs. We're usually able to do that, and we don't, we haven't run into many conversations about appeals.
I'm looking at Attorney Toski on the phone, too, and I know that people often appeal other civil penalties, but it's usually not a planning manager's decision about the zoning code interpretation, it's usually other forms of appeal.
Yeah, yeah, Chair and Commissioners, I haven't been asked to work on anything like that over the past two and a half years that I've been at the city. The Board of Appeals and Adjustments has a statutory duty to do that, so it is required by law that we have some body address interpretation appeals, but like, the senior planners said, it doesn't happen very much at all.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair, and great job handling my absence, I appreciate it. Sorry, I'm confused going back to this 57, 45 number and the public notice slash public hearing. So, reading the table again, or the recommendation, or the summary and the proposal, is that we are, you are recommending that we just move all 57 to conditional, from conditional to permitted, and that there's no public hearing, or I'm sorry, not public hearing, but no public notice as part of those 57 uses, is that correct?
Yeah, Chair and Commissioner Curry, thanks for that question, gives me an opportunity to kind of explain the reasoning behind presenting it in that way. But if we were to list every use of it, it would be a very extensive and long and expensive public notice, with like questionable, I guess, value by just doing a sequential list of all of them. And so what we did in the public notice was to list the number. And for example, if we reduce the number to 45 when we presented it to you or the city council going forward, and then added to that list, the, the only concern becomes whether or not we're invalidating our own public notice, in effect, or that the ordinance that's being presented does not adequately reflect the proposal. So it's kind of one of those things, like you can go backwards, but you can't add on top of, at least that was kind of our thinking in crafting the public notice. That's why the language specifically says in the notice, up to 57.
Okay.
Devil's in the details kind of thing.
Yeah, so, okay, statistically confirmed, so, is what we're voting on is the 47, is moving the 47 uses from conditional to permitted, and not having the public notice? Is that right? Or am I just super confused here?
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Curry, and all, and Kevin, you can chime in if I am kind of not capturing this right, but I, I think what, I think what we'd ask you to do is to consider the ordinance as it's presented to you. If you want to amend, if your recommendation involves amending that in some way, I will certainly present that guidance and recommendation to the city council. Then it becomes a little bit of a administrative decision or decision on our part of how do we notice it when we have gotten clear guidance from the city council to include all 57. So I don't know, you know, similar to the first applicant of item one, I don't know if we want you to recommend it down, or say we don't recommend, we recommend denial of this ordinance so much as we want to carry forward your guidance, but also honor the council's direction to include all in the original or initial ordinance. So Kevin, if you have, we didn't talk through this, this is a sausage making on the fly here, we didn't talk through that, per se, on the front end, but that's kind of where my head's at with it.
Yeah, Chair, Chair and Commissioners, I think staff has presented a list of 57 uses they would like removed, moved from conditional to permitted. In those situations, there would not be any public notice because there's no public hearing, so, and like Nick said, if you give somebody notice and there's no public hearing, they get frustrated because they show up and can't participate. So we wouldn't give public notice in those situations. So if the planning commission wants to recommend a reduced number of those uses that are going to move from conditional to permitted, we can do that, we just need a, a motion of what those uses would be, or a reference to this slide or something, that would say that your recommendation is X with this caveat, or whatever.
Yeah, and forgive, forgive me, Chair, if, I hope I'm not confusing the issue further, too. I think what Kevin's talking about is that once a use is permitted, it does no, it no longer requires a conditional use permit, so it no longer requires a notice. The issue I was speaking about with respect to the notice has to do with how we frame up the public notification in the paper of this ordinance itself. And so I think that's where the discrepancy lies. The best way to do that, to honor your recommendation, but also in respect to the city council's prior guidance.
So, Mr. Johnson, the
Chair, Chair and Commissioner, I, let me just give a little crash course. We do public hearings for ordinance changes at PC and at city council. So we have to notice twice, once for public, planning commission, once for city council. The planning, or the, the notice for the city council will usually go out after the planning commission meeting, so we have a, we have a clear recommendation of what it might be. What Nick was referencing is that we had to include all of those uses to capture what could happen. So if you recommend only 45 of them, that, that would be kind of included under that umbrella of 57, so we wouldn't have to make any changes to the public notice for the ordinance, if that makes sense. So it's kind of like a lesser included thing.
Thanks, Kevin, I probably made that worse than it had to be.
Mr. Johnson, I have a, just kind of a follow-up question, because based on what you said, the city council was supportive of the planning commission's recommendations of 45 versus the 57, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the way that, I wouldn't say that they, as a group, as a Yeah, the, the way that, uh, I wouldn't say that they, uh, as a group, as a consensus group, said that, uh, it should be 45 and we want to advance the, um, uh, planning commission recommendation. Keep in mind that this, this asked, this part of the discussion came on the tail end of a longer discussion around site plan review. That was what took the focus of, uh, the city council's discussion in my view. And so there was a suggestion, uh, during the meeting to include all 57, uh, uses because they wanted to maintain maximum flexibility, um, as they saw it in the ordinance and adjust to dial it back later if they so chose, based on the public hearing, based on planning commission's recommendation. They just wanted to keep the door open, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? All right, the city is the applicant on this item, so we will open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this item, feel free to come forward.
Hello, uh, Robert Coleman here again. Um, I just wanted to ask if I saw in the, uh, in the packet that the, the clumping of two family dwellings at, in some ways getting removed, does that mean that the entire, like the clumping requirement or the clumping condition, is that still going to remain like, or is it just in reference to R1? Um, the, the clumping of two family dwellings doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. It kind of seems like, I mean, I don't know when it entered code, but, uh, it kind of seems like a relic of like, oh, we don't kind of want to be like Richfield, because like there's a lot of neighborhoods in Richfield that have a lot of, you know, whole block that's like half two-family dwellings. And, um, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense in 2024, um, that we should still have that, uh, the condition that they can't be clumped. And I just wanted to check to see if the, because it seems like in some instances at least, the clumping, uh, is going away, but is it completely going away? That's the only thing I needed to check on.
Thank you for your question. Um, the public hearing is a time for us to hear from the public and, um, if we so choose, we can ask staff when we close the public hearing. Any other, um, folks in the chamber who would like to testify on this item? Mr. Centenario, is there anyone online?
Gerald Albrecht, there is no one online.
All right, uh, seeing no one, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion to close the public hearing and a second, and I would appreciate a roll call.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookton?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Uh, motion carries. Any discussion? Commissioner Cunningham?
Um, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Johnson to address, uh, the question that came up regarding, uh, two-family dwelling units during the public hearing.
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Cunningham, thank you. Happy to do that. And, uh, yes, the ordinance, the way, as you recalled during the study session, we presented two options about that. One was to just eliminate the grouping use altogether, uh, and the other was to adjust kind of the, the distances or the, uh, number of them that constituted a grouping. Ultimately, both bodies, uh, provided the guidance and direction to just eliminate the grouping use. So the ordinance as it's drafted right now would just eliminate that, uh, consideration altogether.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, comments, discussion? Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Pam Chair. Um, Mr. Centenario, if you could go back to the slide of the 12 items there. Um, I did go and watch, uh, most of the city council's discussion on this. Uh, it's a little flattering to have them talk with the planning commission for a while. Um, it was actually quite interesting. They had, um, a lot of, uh, interesting feedback on, on our processes and, and how they feel we're doing. And that was, uh, yeah, that was interesting to watch. Um, regarding their proposal to carry all 45 forward, um, or all 57, rather, I'm in favor of sticking at 45. Um, I went back and just checked on this and how long we talked about it. And we talked about it for over two hours. It was like, it was over, it was two hours and nine minutes, in fact. And we asked Mr. Johnson to break it out and have a separate meeting because we thought it was too much to discuss in a small portion. And in this case, I felt like the planning commission put a lot of thought into these 12 things. And, um, with no disrespect to city council, they have a lot of things to do. Uh, they discussed it for a significantly less time. And, um, I think my recommendation would be to continue this forward with 45 and, uh, recommend that if the city council wants to go with all 57, that I think they should give these at least some consideration on an individual basis. I think there's items on this list that I think rightly we asked to remain conditional, talking about things like future gas stations, pawn shops, um, heavy, heavy equipment rental. I mean, I, I don't think these are things to be overlooked. And for, uh, well-thought-out reasons, the planning commission asked for these to remain as conditional and, and not permitted. So my recommendation would be that we carry forward, uh, the 45.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I would, uh, agree with that, particularly, I, I think one of the conversations that we had around self-storage facilities was the self-storage facility that we actually had a, a fairly big impact on, on Lindell Avenue and how that looks and interacts with the street and the pedestrian experience. Um, and, but for the conditional use, uh, permit process, um, we would not have had that come in front of us. So I tend to agree. I would, I would prefer to go with the 45. I think, you know, we did put a lot of time and energy into the discussion. And I think for good reason, that we've seen a lot of these come up and we've seen a lot of conversations around, um, these, including golf, vehicle repair, pawn shops. I mean, I get, we have a lot of examples here, um, where we have seen these come forward and I do think that they need to remain conditional. Any other discussion? Commissioner Cunningham?
Um, having not been on the commission during these study sessions, um, but having reviewed the two-hour and nine-minute session prior to this meeting, um, I am in agreement with, uh, Chair Albrecht and Vice Chair, Vice Chair Cookton, um, about, uh, moving forward with approving the 45.
Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, I would agree with that, I think. Based on what I've heard from, uh, planning department, uh, sounds like the city council is mostly focused on site plans and maybe between public hearings and, and these 12 topics, maybe these 12 topics didn't get, uh, the airtime that they needed, uh, to fully consider them. So I guess I, I, one, would agree with, uh, Mr. Johnson and, uh, the purpose of the public notice and it doesn't make sense to send out a public notice if we can't, uh, have a public hearing. Um, and that I think we should also, uh, revert back to the 45 and the 57 that's recommended here.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Johnson, quick question about a clarification question. You said that there was sort of an A or a B option. Um, which is which?
Yeah, so, uh, Chair, uh, not to get, not to elevate one over the other, it doesn't really matter what, uh, label they are. The reason I brought that up is that I wanted it to make clear, and I'll make this clear to the city council, that I have both versions, uh, readily available. Um, and, uh, I don't, I'll, I'll have to talk to Kevin in terms of what that would look like from the public packet, uh, perspective, in terms of what we present, uh, to them. Uh, but I will make sure that, uh, your views on it are very clear and strongly voiced, um, that in two hours and nine minutes, I'm going to use that anecdote for sure. Um, but, uh, uh, the point is, is that when I drafted, went to make the changes, uh, in drafting the ordinance, I, I wanted to, uh, have it be done in such a way that I had that document readily available. In other words, that we didn't have to, you know, uh, lose multiple weeks of time, of procedural time to go back and make adjustments to the original ordinance. So all I was really trying to communicate there is that both versions of this, uh, ultimately, uh, larger policy are ready to go.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
In case PL 2024 dash 127, I move to recommend adoption of the streamlined development ordinance, thereby amending chapters two, 15, 19, 21, and appendix A of the city code with a recommendation that the items moving from conditional to permitted remain at 45 and not the 57, removing the 12 as noted in the staff report.
Mr. Toski, does that work?
Sorry, Chair and Commissioners, I pressed the on button there, but yeah, that works. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, appreciate a roll call.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookton?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Aye.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Uh, that item moves to the city council meeting as a public hearing for the September 30th, uh, city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, item four is a study item. There's no, uh, public hearing incorporated in that, and that is, uh, to consider the approval of the draft, uh, August 15th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting Synopsis. Uh, Commissioners who were present at that meeting were Commissioners White, Commissioner Albrecht, Commissioner Cookton, Commissioner McGovern, and Commissioner Curry. Absent were Commissioner Cunningham and Isa. I believe we have, uh, the 50% um, to actually, uh, move forward with this one this time. So, uh, if anyone is willing to make a motion. Commissioner Cookton?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Planning Commission Meeting Synopsis from August 15th, 2024 as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the draft Planning Commission Meeting Synopsis. Uh, appreciate a roll call.
Chair Albrecht?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cookton?
Aye.
Commissioner Isa?
Aye. abstain, excuse me.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Abstain.
Commissioner Curry?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero with two absentations.
Excellent. All right, uh, item five is also a study item, no public hearing, and it is an update, uh, Planning Commission policy and issue update. Mr. Centenario?
Thank you, Chair Albrecht. I just wanted to give you a brief summary of, uh, some upcoming planning commission meetings. Uh, your next meeting is scheduled for September 19th and there are four, uh, development items on that, uh, agenda. Uh, the, uh, preliminary and final plat for 8525 and 8545 Penn Avenue, that's the, uh, Penn Lake Townhome Project. They made some modifications to their plat, so that had to come through the review process again. Uh, now there's, uh, for a conditional use permit, um, for a, uh, repair facility and, uh, minor major revisions to final development plans for an addition, uh, for it, the site is Discount Tire. There is a conditional use permit for an event center. That's the continuation from tonight. And then, uh, lastly, preliminary and final development plans for, uh, two, uh, an auto dealership. That's the Luther Kia, uh, that is, uh, being proposed to be reconstructed. Uh, the, after that, we have October 3rd, uh, Planning Commission meeting where we have one, uh, public hearing for a conditional use, use permit for instructional center and then two study items.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, any items for discussion that the planning commission would like to bring forward? All right, seeing none, uh, we will conclude our September 5th, 2024 meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Thank you.